And there's some Township Zoning Commission to order. And Ms. Sarah, would you like to call roll?
Yes, Mr. Eliff.
Here.
Ms. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Gothard?
Here.
Mr. Henson?
Here, thank you. First on tonight's agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. We also have a copy of last month's May 22 minutes.
I need a second.
Oh, you did a so moved on me, sorry, thank you. Sarah, would you like to call roll?
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes, thank you, Sarah. Now we have May 22 meeting minutes. It looks like we do have quorum for that. Real quickly, Sarah, I do have one addition on page 14 that I noticed. I apologize for it. At the very bottom, after Mr. Lewis, I did want to make sure it was on the record, and again, sorry for the quietness, that I did ask the applicant if they wanted to table or continue, and they did not wish to do so. 12020. Were there any other amendments or changes or questions? With that, do I have a motion to approve the May 22 minutes?
Motion to approve with the modifications stated.
Thank you. Sarah, would you like to call roll?
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis, sorry. I didn't mean to skip you. Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is a continuation of a quasi judicial hearing for a major adjustment to a PUD. Case 12020 PUD for 1240 and 1246 Nagel Road. Thank you again for being here tonight. Because this is a quasi judicial hearing, I have a little bit of a statement that I need to read out loud. After I read it, I will then ask you to be sworn in for testimony this evening. So, without further ado, first, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not wish to hear opinions, only facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria, and as a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium. After being recognized, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is to be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm?
This is for two cases still?
Yeah, for the first case. Unfortunately, we will have to do this a second time this evening. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you very much. Staff, would you like to make your presentation?
Thank you. And for the audience, excuse me, we will be giving a presentation of the staff reports. We will go fairly quickly because there are more details in this actual staff report. If there were no copies out in the hallway, they are posted on our website. You can go under Anderson Township OH.gov, and it'll either be under Committees and Zoning Commission, or you can get through under Planning and Zoning Department. And the zoning commission, if I go too fast, just slow me down and ask questions, but I want to make sure that we have enough time to give everyone in the audience a chance to speak. So, this is case 12020 PUD, which is a major adjustment. The applicant is Christopher Stark of WT Group on behalf of Klaus Anderson LLC, who is the property owner. Location's at 1240 and 1246 Nagel Road, and this is a request for a major adjustment to the PUD that was approved in 2020. The original PUD was for an office building and a daycare, and the proposed use is a 5,630 square foot building for car wash with vacuums, lighting, parking spaces, and a detention basin. This was continued from last month, so we won't go over the zoning history, but last month, May 22nd, the zoning commission did continue the case for the property located there to, for additional information from the applicant and compliance with the zoning resolution. So just to refresh your memory on the site, this is the property map. Nagel Road here, this is Beechmont. Sorry, we're not on the screen, are we? We are stuck. Okay, try it again. We had this problem last month, didn't we? And I wasn't here. So, let me try again. We're just gonna... See if we can't get it working again. I'll just close out of it and get back in, and we'll see what happens. We'll go at a slower pace, so it will keep up. How's that? So, this is Nagel Road and Beechmont Avenue. This is the site. These buildings were the former office buildings that were on the site. This is an aerial, a current aerial of the site, but the buildings removed. To the north, we have the Goddard School, the credit union, Anderson Township Pub and Grill, and then a little strip shopping center to the south. The zoning to the north is OO Planned Office. This site again is a PUD. To the south, the Pub and Grill is also a PUD. Then we have retail zoning, single-family, and planned office. This was the altus survey for the property. This is the site plan for the property. This is the building itself. The two drives off of Nagel were proposed to be remain. You would come into the site, there would be three lanes to line up to go through the car wash, and then the vacuums would be back over in this direction. The detention basin is to the east of the site, and then landscape area. All cross-access, all driveways remain to be the same or remain open. And then there was parking spaces to the back of the little strip center that are actually on this property that would also remain. And then full access back out to Beechmont. This is the photometric plan. With foot candles, it's too small really to see on the screen, so we won't stay on this too much. This is the proposed landscape plan, which has been modified. At the last meeting, the right-of-way wasn't identified on the site plan, and therefore, and also, the sidewalk was not identified. There is an existing sidewalk, so the site plan has been revised, and the landscaping plan has been revised accordingly. We can come back to that. These are the elevation drawings that denote the architectural features and the building materials. These are the color renderings. These are the site photos looking north. This is the existing sidewalk along Nagel. There are single-family homes across the street. Some of those have been converted to office uses. This is the shared access that goes to the east. This is the Goddard School property, and then the cell tower just off of the Goddard, or adjacent to the Goddard School property. This is the strip center on Beechmont that has parking on the subject site. This is one of the cross-access drives leading back out to Nagel. This is the Anderson Township Pub and Grill, who also has parking off of that access drive. This was a sign on Beechmont Avenue that is located off-premise. So, with this, since this was a continued case, the items in bold are updated since our last meeting based upon your request for new plans and more information. So, the applicant has submitted cross-access easements that have been recorded, and the cross-access easements are also identified on the plan. This is regarding zoning compliance with the zoning resolution. The applicant did submit a plan that shows the right-of-way for Nagel, as well as a 30-foot setback that is required from the right-of-way. This plan has been updated to show the existing sidewalk, which is proposed to remain. The only item that's still not in compliance is just access from that sidewalk back into the site itself. There are details now for ADA signage. The general design requirements for the parking-loading areas is compliant now. A dumpster enclosure and vacuum enclosure elevations have been provided. And then Article 5.3G2 refers to cross-access easements and shared parking agreement, which has been recorded. Lighting plan is still not compliant. There are different lighting level requirements when adjacent to office and when adjacent to single-family, so there are still areas on the plan that are not compliant. The light, the poles were reduced in height to 24 feet, so they are compliant with the height of the poles. Just the lighting levels will need to be adjusted when adjacent to office and when adjacent to single-family. So, we won't go through the plans, since that was presented to you last month, and the design guidelines. However, with the design guidelines, there was a comment about the building materials. So, the applicant has submitted new elevation drawings that include the building dumpster and vacuum enclosures, and all three have similar materials labeled as masonry, standing, seam metal, and brick banding. Again, this is getting back to our design guidelines regarding site planning. There is a sidewalk along Nagel, which is proposed to remain, but there still needs to be a pedestrian connection, not just to the car wash itself, but just to enable pedestrian connectivity to the surrounding properties. So, based off of the PUD requirements and findings, you can see those 1 through 15, and then also in the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. We can go back to the site plan if you'd like to stay there if you have any other questions about some of the other drawings.
Just one for you, Paul, which was, I know you told, you guys told me last time that you didn't have to have the landscaping, but when I looked at the plan, it looked like they put a decent landscaping buffer along the north property line. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
That's correct, since it's a retail... I'm sorry, since retail to office, it wasn't necessarily a requirement, but I know there was some discussion about buffering that to the Goddard School. And so, some additional landscaping has been proposed there.
Okay.
And that's here on this.
Yep, thank you. Ms. McBride?
Yeah, I don't have anything for staff, thank you.
Just one comment. I believe in the staff report, it talks about the off-site sign is not part of the discussion for tonight, is that correct?
That's correct. This, the PUD was only for this parcel, and that was an off-premise sign, so the zoning commission needs to stick with just this parcel in this PUD. The other property is zoned E retail. It's a different zoning district.
Alright, thank you.
I'm sorry, I did have a question. You did mention about the ISR.
Yes, and that was provided in the revised plans. I don't have it in front of me, it was about...
I have the number 64 now versus the 60.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair, could I now ask that one question? So, with regards to that off-premise sign, if they decided to pursue that, then that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals because it's in an E district?
So, yes. If, when the buildings were removed, and they had, the buildings themselves had, those, the office buildings that were back there used that sign, and they had an agreement in place to use that sign, and I understand that that agreement is still in place. We did notify the owner of the sign that it was a non-conforming sign, and it should come down because the buildings were removed and the use is no longer there. They challenged our letter, saying that they are still using that sign as a non-conforming sign in just advertising their retail center as Anderson Retail, which they did change the face on that. So, our interpretation, unless it's further challenged, is that it still is a non-conforming sign, and they could reuse that non-conforming sign.
They, the strip center could use it, but not...
Well, and they also, the strip center has an agreement, that property owner has an agreement in place with that property behind them, so we wouldn't regulate that content.
Even though it's been vacant for...
They did a face change and use that sign, so it would be an argument that our law director could give us some guidance on.
So, in essence, it's grandfathered forever?
Unless something were to happen to the strip center. But that was the guidance we were given, we can still bring that up to our attorney, but I don't feel like it's part of the PUD application.
And I agree, but I would like for you to request some opinion from Mr. Powell on that.
Okay.
Paul, just one quick question. I think, this is me struggling to keep up with the updates, but the detention pond is now in the area east of the, instead of up in the frontage setback?
So, the buildings that were here before did not have detention?
No, but on the plans that I have, it's indicated here along Nagel versus here. And I was gonna ask about that, but the plan you showed shows it in the back.
No, I'm just told, Sarah, I think this is the, this is the old plan, I apologize. On the PowerPoint. So, we can ask the applicant that as well. We can do some research.
Okay, well, I guess, my question was gonna be if the detention bond, excuse me, detention pond in the frontage setback is okay?
It is okay. That's where the post office is. It's also where the credit union's detention is, so it's fine. They still meet our landscaping requirements in the front, regardless with the detention there anyway.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, if the applicant or representative is here and would like to make their presentation, please step forward.
You're right, it was switched.
Okay.
And I apologize, this is not the current landscaping plan that's in your packet.
Gotcha. Sorry, Paul, but the one in our packet is current.
That is the correct one, yes.
Thank you.
They did not make the presentation, so my apologies.
Good evening. Could you please state your name, address, and affiliation for us?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Chris Stark, and I'm with WT Group, and the project manager for this project for Carriage House Car Wash. One of the items that, that was noted as non-compliant was the sidewalk from the public right-of-way sidewalk. That is on the plan, along with a bike rack to satisfy that requirement. And that is actually placed on the north side of the car wash entrance. And those, those either patrons or even employees can use the sidewalk to cross in front of there, and then come along the south side of the building to get to the office area where the, where the control center is for the pay station. And then an additional note for the detention from, moving from the rear of the property to the front of the property. We typically try to put detention towards the, towards the rear of the property, but in this point, it made sense to actually come downhill and to put it towards the front, as Paul noted. And it's, we landscaped it real nice in compliance, along with the landscaping across the north area of the, up against the Goddard School to help with the screening, the landscape screening for the property.
Thank you very much. Brian, I'll start with you again, if you have any questions.
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Anne?
Yeah, thank you. So, what time, what are the hours of the car wash?
I do not know that, but I do have my client here who can speak on behalf of that.
Hello, my name's Charan Jackson. It's C-H-A-R-A-N, last name's Jackson. I'm at 3624 Kendall Avenue in Cincinnati, Ohio. I am the Vice President of Real Estate for Tire Discounters. Car, the Car Wash Concept is a wholly owned affiliate of Tire Discounters, so are locally owned operated. The hours, we have two existing car washes in the marketplace, Carriage House Car Washes. The hours will be 7:30 in the morning till 8 at night.
So, I guess my question to you is, can the lights then be dimmed, like a half hour after closing?
Uh, yeah, we'll have the ability.
Okay. And then was, I think one of the other things that someone, it wasn't me, another commission member asked, and was maybe the noise from the vacuums and the whoosh, you know, when you leave the tunnel?
Yeah. The great thing about the car wash that we're building here, this is gonna be one of our first prototypes in the marketplace. There's one currently, this prototype is being built up on Kings Mills Road right now in Mason. But this is a high-end car wash in terms of the experience, in terms of the equipment that we're building. The Wood family that is the owner of the concept goes first-in-class all the way. The equipment that's being used within this car wash is actually, is a less noisy, silent equipment. We also have barrier doors that automatically go up and go down as cars enter and exit.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Sure, thank you.
To dovetail on Mr. McBride's question, the hours of operation for the vacuums, are they coin-operated card, can they be used after 8:00 PM?
No, they cannot. The vacuums are actually free. Part of our value proposition is that we offer free vacuums with every wash. So, the vacuums go off when we shut the car wash down.
Can someone just use the vacuums without the car wash?
We prefer that they don't, but yes, they could if...
Freeze-free?
Yeah, somebody want, well, it's free with the car wash, but if somebody really wanted to do that, they could.
Okay. And as far as the attendant, is there someone taking the money upfront, is someone there if there's problems? Is everything automated?
No, no, absolutely not. We have folks on site, and again, if you wanna, we have one on Wooster Pike, if you wanna see, that was a conversion that we did. But if you see the rendering up the bottom right-hand side, that's actually our pay station, that will be manned, and that's connected to our control center. During a busy day on a Saturday, you'll see three, four, or five people on site.
Okay. No other questions? Mr. Gothie?
Thank you. On your current location, there is a towel hut with also cleaning supplies, and that was on the previous...
Got rid of it.
Okay, there's no towels on this?
Yeah, yeah, it's a losing proposition. Unfortunately, we actually have laundered towels at that location, and people are throwing them away, so we've eliminated them from the prototype.
Okay, I just know it was also on the previous plan.
Yeah, I know. It's a recent business decision.
Okay. That's the only question I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only question I had really was with regard to the elevations, and the ones that I was looking at here weren't really matching the site plan, but I did want to just ask the question about the building materials, and if they're pretty illustrative of what are gonna be used for this location. I think it was actually addressed earlier, but...
Yeah, it's CMU for the most part, split-face block on the, on the dark gray. When you get into the white banding, that's actually a CMU and brick product. And then, as you go up, you get the banding up top. That is a brick as well, so it's a combination of CMU and brick. And then, the hut is a, I guess it's a fiberboard? Cement fiberboard is what it is. Cement, cement fiberboard, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one more?
Yeah, a hardy board.
Great. Yeah, Ms. McBride?
Yeah, so the CMU, is that interco color?
I don't, interco color?
Is it painted or...
No, 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 no. It's...
The color's an interco color, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a minor question. I looked at some of the materials that had a Beechmont address, yet this has a Nagel address, and it has two Nagel addresses versus one. Is there gonna be a consolidation since it's one?
So, yes, it was given two Nagel addresses once the buildings were torn down and during the last PUD, and this will still have a Nagel address.
The 1246 will go away?
We will give it, well, we'll check with the county. The county is, will make that choice, so which one to go.
And was I wrong when I saw a Beechmont address in some of the trials?
They had put a Beechmont address in their original application, but it had been readdressed to Nagel once those buildings were removed.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, if we have any audience members in attendance who would like to speak in favor of the application, you're welcome to do so. And seeing none, at this time, if there are members in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the case tonight, you're welcome to step up to the front. Seeing none, we can close this portion of the discussion and open it up to discussion amongst the commission. Mr. Eliff, I'm just gonna continue to pick on you.
I'll go first. Not too much to say. I think the applicant did a really nice job responding to our comments. They got their plan in order. I did appreciate they were willing to go above and beyond, putting some extra landscaping in. I think it looks very nice, and with the site improvements, it should work well there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
Yeah, I concur with Mr. Eliff's comments. I think there were a lot of questions that we all had last month, and I think that they've addressed those to my satisfaction, so...
Mr. Lewis?
I agree.
I agree also.
I do as well. I did want to point out, I especially appreciate the detectable ramps that you're improving the sidewalks with. I thought that was a nice addition. And I had some comments about the signage, which we don't need to discuss this evening, so thank you very much. Any further discussion amongst the commission? Nope? Seeing none, we can close that, and I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I would make a motion that we approve case Anderson 1-2020 PUD major adjustment for the Carriage Car Wash at 1240 and 1246, right now on the white Nagel Road, based on the recommendations 1 through 15 contained in our staff report, and subject to the conditions also in our staff report, 1 through 4 with the following additions, that on number 2, we add that the lights would be dimmed 30 minutes after closing of the car wash, and to add a condition number 5, that the CMU that's to be used on the building would be interco color.
Is there a second?
A second?
Thank you, Mr. Gothie. Ms. Donovan, would you like to call roll?
Before I call roll, you said the CMU to be used will be interco color. Got it, thank you. Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for land use plan case one, two thousand twenty-three LUP. This plan is for the Anderson Township Trails and Walkways Plan Update. Paul, take the lead.
Before you start, I just wanna disclose to the commission that I have, I volunteered for the last eighteen years on the Transportation Advisory Committee, but I don't see any need to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. The applicant is Anderson Township Board of Township Trustees, and this is a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for the Trails and Walkways Plan. This is our two thousand twenty-three update to the two thousand eighteen plan. We do try to update this plan and revisit it close to every five years, depending on the implementation of the previous plan. So our first plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine, and again, there's been subsequent updates to this plan. The goals have pretty much remained the same, but integration of walkways into all planning as the township develops and evolves, consistent with the nineteen eighty-six sidewalk plan, development of a plan for ongoing funding for this type of infrastructure improvement, and creation of public recognition of benefit and support of funding methods which may be developed. So a little bit about our process and public engagement for this update process. In March of two thousand twenty-two, a subcommittee of the Transportation Advisory Committee, TAC, was formed to begin the updating process. Subcommittee members and staff have been updating the trails through a series of bi-monthly meetings. We also recently, and this was over the past ten months, and then recently on May the twenty-fourth, there was a public engagement session that was held here at the Anderson Center, and at the same time, we had a virtual open house through most of May, and this is when the plan was posted on the township's website. We did social media posts to gain feedback. And I should back up. At the beginning in March, we had also sent out requests for different trail segments or different ideas to be included in this plan update. So we did public engagement on the front end. We had our committee kind of lead, we didn't have a separate committee for this, we used our existing TAC committee, and then we had a public open house toward the end. So on June the first, two thousand twenty-three, at the trustees' interim meeting, they did pass a resolution initiating the adoption process. The way that plans work in the township, the trustees initiate the process, it's first heard by our zoning commission for a recommendation to the trustees, and then if the trustees approve the plan, it's also sent to Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for consideration of adoption and recognition of to be used during zone change that are first heard at regional planning. So again, this is the plan summary. I won't go too much. I do wanna hit on some of the differences of this plan, and one, I think here, we'll start with some of the most substantial changes and the differences of this plan versus the two thousand eighteen plan. As you know, our, the low-hanging fruit has been done. We've built our sidewalks where we can. What's left are the more difficult places, either because of the topography or creeks, cost of the other, or possibly other infrastructure that might be in the way of creating and constructing a sidewalk. So in this one in particular, we looked at ways of improving some of our existing sidewalk infrastructure, such as improving sidewalk crosswalks, also taking advantage of potentially on, um, on roadway lanes. A good example of this is on Woodcroft Road, where we did on lane, or on, uh, on drive lane shoulders, we're calling them shoulders, but basically striping the travel lane to delineate the vehicles from the pedestrians. We're looking at possibly doing these in some of our other neighborhoods. We're also traditionally have focused on county roads and implementing sidewalks on county roads and not on township streets, but we have found recently that there may be an easier and more cost-effective parallel path on a township street versus constructing something on a county roadway. And we most recently did this on Rambling Hills as an alternative location for a sidewalk other than constructing on Patterson Road. We had started on Patterson, and Patterson proved to be too difficult with stormwater, and it turns out Rambling Hills is pretty much a parallel connection up to Beauchmond Avenue, so, and that sidewalk was just recently constructed this spring. We're looking at other areas in the township to possibly do something like that. We're also looking at other funding mechanisms, and we before had somewhat of a formula, and we still have a formula that prioritizes sidewalk construction, but we also put years to that formula. And the formula is somewhat different as well. Before, we did basically an area that didn't take into account the actual walkway, or how you would walk down the street. So before, it would be a buffer based off of a point into a neighborhood, whether it was a half mile, three-quarters of a mile, or a mile, to see how many households that sidewalk would connect, but it didn't necessarily take into account topography and other issues. So we were more diligent on picking households, basically taking the road itself and picking the households, and not just doing the generic pick a point and do a buffer around the point. So with that being said, again, this is our implementation table that is proposed to this plan. Two thousand twenty-three is our current year, and these are projects that were carried over from the previous plan, and most of them are either have been constructed or in design, or already in design. And what is different about this? We have our sidewalk projects. Again, our previous plan focused on sidewalks, but this one also incorporates crosswalk projects as well as corridor projects, striping, street marking projects, and then natural trail progress, projects. We do have them color-coded, and as you can see, starting basically in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, you will see some of the sidewalk projects and the crosswalk projects. Some of them are in the design phase, they'll be in the planning stage, the engineering phase, and then the construction phase. And we wanted the implementation table to help keep us on track, staff, in implementing these, these projects, but also so the residents would have a general idea of the timing of a construction project. And again, this plan in particular incorporates crosswalk projects, corridor projects, and striping, street marking, and natural trails. So a little bit of everything, just because we are at that point, which is a good thing in our community, where we have very much success in building sidewalks and trails in our township and making those connections. So we're trying to think a little bit outside the box to do those last connections that are very difficult to construct, or maybe do something alternative to constructing something very expensive on roadway, one road, moving it to another road. So with that being said, I kinda went through it very quick, and I don't, there's been a lot of work that went into this plan, but I do know we have a lot on the agenda tonight. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the plan.
Thank you, Paul. And before I pass it down to you, Brian, I just wanted to say excellent work, including Commissioner Lewis on this. I think there's a particular commendation that needs to be made for doing this type of a plan in-house, and really, including the fact that it has the implementation plan, and I think that's a really good testament to the capacity that we have on staff, so very good. Thank you very much. And Brian, did you have an initial question?
Yes, just in, very briefly, and I'll second everything you just said. It's terrific. I know that the sidewalks have benefited the neighborhood I live in. There's a lot of people that live there now, they don't remember when the sidewalks weren't there, and they've really enhanced the quality of our life and our neighborhood, so I'm very grateful for that. The one thing I, that jumped out at me that I have a question about, and I know it's like all about Newtown, but on page seventeen, there's the little map showing the five-mile trail connection to the Little Miami River Trail, which is, would be awesome to tie, basically could tie in a lot of Anderson to that, and I see some discussion of widening Newtown Road and stuff. What's the, where do you see that going, Paul? And I apologize if I didn't see it precisely in here, but I think that, I mean, the connections are really important, but that's a, that's a kind of a game changer, I think.
So there's, there's been a lot of discussion over the years, and many of the years, on how to make that connection between five-mile trail and Little Miami Trail, and how to get there, whether it's through the Turpin Hills neighborhood, whether it was through private property, or whether it was on Newtown Road. And we have approached some residents in Turpin Hills as well as Turpin Lake. We don't have full support from everyone of where the trail would go, or an easement that would be needed, and as you know, the township does not have a history and has never pushed an easement on to someone. We've purchased easements, but we've never done it through eminent domain for sidewalks, so that's never been approached that the township wanted to do. So widening Newtown Road may be the best case on this, and we are in discussions with Hamilton County Engineers Office, because they are trying to do a pilot program in Hamilton County to do, to do these things, widen the roadway to allow for a bike path. It won't be as safe as a five-mile trail, you know, for all users, but it would be for those that do, are more skilled at biking, it'd be safer for them, because there are some that already use Newtown for travels, and it's not, it's not very safe. So even with a widened berm, I wouldn't encourage your whole family to go out for leisurely bike on that, but at the same time, it would make it safer for those more skilled cyclists. And that's our, that's what we hope to now. Eventually, hopefully, there will be a connection that would, you know, be for all users, but that's still gonna be in the long-range plan.
Ms. McBride?
Thank you. Yeah, well done on the, on the plan, guys. Somebody whose firm does these, well done, really, really well done. Yeah, and sad, my neighborhood isn't in here, but maybe next time we'll get a shot, so thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
I would just say we have open spots on the committee. No, it's, thanks, Paul, you, you've been driving this, leading the meeting, so I appreciate that. No questions?
I'll concur with the rest of the commission. Fantastic work for staff and also the volunteer committee, so thank you, all that was involved, but no questions, thank you.
Again, I also appreciated when I was reading it, getting the history lesson of, you know, the existing projects, how they came to be and how they're funded. I have the utmost tiniest of edits, and I would never in a million years notice this if it weren't a few blocks from my house, but on the diagram that's on page three, in the top-left block for, there's a current project, the Northport and Hilltree Project is listed as a striping project. And when it bumps down to two thousand twenty-four build, it switches to a crosswalk project, so it's just a color coding thing, like I said. Thank you very much, Paul.
I do, so this has gone through, it's been a truly a team effort. Brad Bowers, a former planner with the township, this was, started with him, under his guidance. After his departure, Steve Severs kinda took this on, and with our co-ops, we had Ashley Reynolds last year, and Brendan Cloutier currently, and then Chris Cavalero, and of course Sarah, and it's been a team effort, so, after all.
Yeah. At this point, I can ask any members of the audience to come up and ask questions of the project as well. Seeing none, we'll close public discussion. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I would make a motion that we recommend approval of the land use plan to Anderson Township Trails and Walkways Plan Update, case one dash two thousand twenty-three LUP.
Second. Ms. Donovan, would you like to call a rule?
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you, Paul. The next item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing for a major modification to a final development plan, case one, nineteen eighty-seven, for eighty-five ninety-eight Beauchmond Avenue. Paul, if you'd like to present. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I just, one moment? I do wanna disclose to the committee and to those in attendance that actually I was the project manager and did the zoning on this center back in April of nineteen eighty-seven, and if you look at the original document, you will see my initials as the project manager. I think, however, enough time has passed, and I have not worked on the property, that I can be abstract from my opinion. Check whatever, yes.
Okay. The applicant is Jack Meany with CBC Design, Inc., on behalf of Beauchmond Outparcel Enterprises, LLC, who is the property owner. Location's at eighty-five ninety-eight Beauchmond Avenue, and the request is a major modification to the approved final development plan for property located at eighty-five ninety-eight Beauchmond Avenue. This was approved for the construction of Chick-fil-A back in February twenty-six, two thousand six. So the applicant now is proposing a small addition, four hundred ninety-three square feet, along with redoing their drive-through lanes, adding some canopies and parking lot modifications. So as was stated, the Chick, the original Chick-fil-A was approved in two thousand six with nine conditions, and the restaurant was constructed later that year. The subject site was and is part of the Beauchmond Shopping Center, was, which was rezoned EE planned business by the Hamilton County back in nineteen eighty-seven. And just so you know, so the PUD is a planned unit development. That was our first case. That's different than a planned district. It's very confusing, I apologize for that, but we inherited it. A planned district, which is a double-letter zoning district, requires a little bit different process for modifications than the PUD. The PUD is a quasi-judicial, that's what requires swearing in, the EE planned district does not, so it's a little bit different. So, sorry, but, this is the site in question. So the larger outline is the original, was part of the original rezoning for the shopping center. There are two outlined here. This is the parcel for Chick-fil-A, which is still owned by the same owners of the shopping center. This is part of the larger parcel, which is also owned by the shopping center, but this parcel here is, both of these are included in this major modification. So this is the current aerial, this is the current Chick-fil-A, and their parking. This is a separate parcel, that, so that's why there is two separate parcel numbers on the, in the staff report. This is the zoning. Again, all the red is some type of retail, either planned retail or just E, which is retail. And this, again, was the original shopping center that was approved. They were labeled as different building letters. Way back when, before Chick-fil-A was constructed, this was considered building H. This building here was never constructed, that's building F. And then you'll see in the original conditions, it relates to building B and B one, so there, sorry about that. There was a portion of building B that was never constructed, so that was borrowed to add square footage back to Chick-fil-A once the, when Chick-fil-A was originally constructed. That's where B one comes from. Sounds like we're playing bingo, but that's where it comes from. So these are the site photos, this is looking at the restaurant and its current configuration, same way with the parking lot and its current configuration. You come in and then go into the drive-through, and this is the exit lane. This has slightly been modified when they, from when they originally opened. And then the dumpster enclosure, which comes off of the drive aisle for the shopping center. This is looking up at the shopping center, looking toward the west. This is the dumpster enclosure. This is looking back toward Beauchmond Avenue to the south, and this is the drive-through area. This is just a sidewalk along Beauchmond Avenue, one of the existing signs for the shopping center. So with a planned district, these are the findings. We took the original resolution from two thousand six, and everything that you see is bolded is relating to the conditions and being updated for this proposal. So these were the original conditions. Number one, it talks about plans being routed to all of our partnering agencies, and this would be done during the building permit review process. Number two, talks about all the original conditions, and this is all compliant except as noted in condition number four, which we'll get to. Number three, again, refers to the other, our partnering agencies, and this is part of the routing of a building permit. Number four talks about the three hundred square feet that was borrowed from building one to build the original Chick-fil-A. So staff is proposing that this just be borrowed from building F now for an additional square footage, which is five hundred ninety-three for kitchen expansion. for an additional square footage, which is 593 for kitchen expansion. All of Building F was not constructed. Number five is regarding signage, and signage will be reviewed under separate application. There is no freestanding sign for Chick-fil-A, just wall signage and then signage for the drive-through. No changes are proposed for their dumpster enclosure. Number seven, no change is proposed for their loading area. Number eight, a new landscape plan is proposed and is compliant with the zoning resolution. As you saw from the pictures, in a lot of our businesses this year, they had some damage to the landscaping over the winter time. So they are proposing a whole new landscape plan, which would be needed for the site anyway. There was a condition number nine that spoke about adding additional trees to the back of the building, and that was added, and on the landscaping plan, these are not proposed to be modified. They're proposed to remain. So with the applicable plans, we look at the Anderson Plan, which is our comprehensive plan, and this is consistent with economic vitality and land use and development from our comprehensive plan. We also look at design guidelines, which includes building materials. The proposed addition of the drive-through canopies is consistent with the restaurant itself, and no changes are proposed to the actual brick on the existing restaurant. We looked at circulation patterns, both with pedestrian and vehicular. And we also look at drive-throughs. They do an amazing job with their drive-through now, with the space that they have, and we think that the proposed improvements would be, would help the situation. Again, the existing trails plan, there is a sidewalk along Beauchamp Avenue, and there is a connection from the building to that sidewalk. So staff recommends approval. And again, the bold would be the modifications. So number four, this would be square footage borrowed from Building F. Number eight, we just recommended modifying that to be compliant with their proposed landscaping plan. Number nine, again, just modifying the language to update it with this application. So we happy to answer. Any questions?
I guess this is a question for Paul, which is not much of one, but on item 11, the circulation. I just, I'm not sure there's a solution to this problem with this site, but I get very uncomfortable when they route the pedestrian walk-up traffic through the drive-through lanes. And that's precisely what happens with this site because the parking lot, as we all know, or if you've been there, is limited functionality during busy times because you can't get in and out of there. And that's why they're having to make these improvements. But, so everybody parks back on the main, the main parking lot for the center, and then you walk across it, and if, and once you make that, then you have to make your way through the stacking aisles. And the fact is, people are distracted in those stacking aisles. And I, I think that aspect of it could get some attention in this drawing. Maybe some sort of raised, not like a speed bump, but sometimes you see like a little raised walkway or something like that. So people are like, oh, yeah, that's right. I'm not supposed to be in that space because people are walking there, because a lot of people do. I use the app, right? You do, Paul, I bet. So I, I was wondering if maybe they could give that some attention. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That was, I had two, two questions or comments, and that was one of them. So thank you, Ms. Ella, for reducing my chat time. The other is the proposed 24-space parking lot. I have a concern that if you pull in there and all of those spaces are full, you have to back out.
We had, the staff had the same concern, and we did talk to the applicant about that. And one of the solutions that we came up with was that last hatched area for a turnaround spot. And I don't have it on the PowerPoint, but it's in the-
Can you, could you pull up the site plan just so we could take a look?
I don't have it.
Oh, you can't go backwards?
I don't have it in the PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand, but I was just, oh, okay.
Oh, yes.
Except don't they need that hatched area to make the ADA compliant for them?
So that, it's, it's, it was modified. It's not on the one you have, Brian. It's on the other site plan. So... Do you see it on? So the ADA, the hatch ADA would have to remain, like you said. The last parking spot on the east side was hatched out.
And so what would they do then? Sign that or something? No, no parking?
I think that's a good question for the applicant, for a discussion.
Okay, all right, I'll save that.
But yes, we had the exact same, and it is a difficult site. It's so tight, and trying to get two lanes. The good thing about this design is that currently, the parking lot, you do have to back out into the drive-through lanes. So this would eliminate that. If you're coming to park, it does separate you from the drive-through lanes, except for the pedestrian aspect of trying to get across it.
Yeah, I have questions about the traffic flow, but I'll wait for the applicant. But this housekeeping about the square footage and the buildings not being built going back before some of us can remember into the eighties, early eighties. How much is left of?
So the building H is really what's left, and we borrow on square footage from Building H.
And is that, is that your decision or is that the owner's decision of how to allocate that?
We did not. We got a letter from the owner authorizing the application. They did not specify that they were authorizing transferring square footage.
Is that something that needs to be done?
I think we can ask the applicant that as well, to see what their discussion with them has been.
Okay.
I'll do a quick calculation here. It's 240.
I think at some point, even after we ask the applicant, I think we'd want to have that documented.
Okay. So, yeah, it's 240 by 70, which is 168,490 square feet. They're borrowing 500 square feet from that.
I have no other questions for staff.
Questions ahead. Paul, I see one handicap space. They have off-site the shared parking agreement, but I'm assuming that one isn't per requirement. They're gonna have to meet that somewhere.
So it's a building code requirement. You're required to have onsite, if you have one to 25 parking spaces, you need one handicap space. If you have 26 to 50 parking spaces, you're required to have two. Of course, most choose, depending on the use, have more than that.
Sure. Okay.
So that is a question for the applicant, but it's actually a building code requirement.
The other question was, I think you had a comment in there about the landscape plan and that they needed to make sure that it's compliant. And I wanted to make sure, because it sounded almost like you were saying that it was compliant. But, and I never knew how to do the math on this correctly, but it looks like they do not already have the right number of trees in their, the net, there's a net loss of three. So I just want to make sure that that is pointed out and that it's, you know, looked at.
We calculated that it was compliant. They're required to have one tree per 30 feet of parking lot frontage, and since they're building, their parking's only to the right of their... They're not required to have trees in front of the building itself.
Right.
But they are providing-
And like I said, I always kind of make an educated guess on how we calculate that.
Right.
But I was also using 52 spaces, and we weren't near that. Any other questions from the commission for staff? Seeing none. At this point, if the applicant is present and would like to come up and present, please do so. Remember to state your name, address, and affiliation.
Good evening. Alan Wiley with GBC Design, 565 White Pond Drive, Akron, Ohio. Yeah, thank you, Paul, for all the information on this one. I'll try to answer some of your questions regarding the sidewalks across the drive-through. Unfortunately, with this building, there's drive-through all around it, so they're gonna have to cross. We can certainly look at, in the back, they're putting some kind of, we've done it before, a little bump in the drive-through to, or could we do pavers to kind of make it look like it's different instead of doing the bump? Okay. And then what were the other questions? I apologize. There were quite a few.
I had a question about getting release from the owner of the allocation of the square footage, which they control, and you're going to use some of it.
Yeah, we can do that. We can provide that after the fact. It can be a condition if that's needed.
It's, I said 168, 16,800. I have one to answer.
I didn't challenge your math.
But yes, we can provide, get that letter from the property owner.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can close the presentation and open it up to questions for the applicant.
Yeah, I, can you go over the, the traffic flow of the dual lanes? And I know how it operates today, but it looked like from the pictures that those are sort of cut off now. Coming through the parking lot is-
Yeah, so we're gonna come in dual lanes off-
Paul, do we have a pointer that he can use or?
You want me to come up, bring it up there?
No.
Okay. So we're gonna come in dual lanes off that access drive in the rear of the property there, much like it does today. Come two lanes all the way around in front of the building, and then there's a order canopy right in front of the main door there. So there's two order stations. There'll be team members out there taking orders with iPads to help customers do that. Once they take their order, you will be told which car to follow in front of you so they can keep the orders in, I guess, in process inside. They'll make the turn, merge into one lane, go around the building. We actually have a little bit of a spot in front of the building for if we have a larger order that's not filled in time, please go pull up into that lane. Team member will bring the food out to them, but still allow a bypass that the drive-through can keep moving. There's a full lane that goes all the way out, again, to that access drive. You can make a right and leave. You can make a left and leave.
So you're not coming through the parking lot for the drive-through necessarily, like you are today?
They are completely separate with this project.
Is there an exit if someone doesn't want to wait and they're saying, I've gotta go?
No, not in this one.
Okay.
Yeah. And then to answer your question about the, I guess, the dead-end parking, we do have a striped area. It will be signed. We made the, I'll call it an apron, so that there is room to back out and then leave again. And then with the ADA parking, with the number of spaces we have on our property, we're only required one. We can certainly add another ADA space on the other side of that striped area. It won't cost us any parking, but give two, two ADA spaces there.
Is it been initiated date?
Not to date that I'm aware of, no.
Mr. Gothard, sure.
You show lighting underneath the two canopies, the enlarged one where orders are taken, then also where they're delivered. What sort of light fixtures are underneath there?
They're LED and they're flush with the ceiling of it.
So complete cutoff of light?
Yeah, we just, Chick-fil-A likes to have it relatively bright in that area because there are cars and there are team members out there just to make sure everybody sees what's going on.
Okay. And then, you know, the other commission comment about from the shared parking over, you know, there's a striped area around that parking area. Is that designated for pedestrians or what is that exact? It's 42 as far as the keynote. And 42 just says yellow safety post, but then also there is a striping 42.
Oh, no. That's for the team member. You're talking to one, the striped area along the drive-through?
Along the drive-through.
Yes, that's for the team members. There'll be signage for the people to cross the, cross that drive, access drive and go into the site. There's a big patio area there, so it'll be pretty evident that you're to cross that and go into the patio area to the main door.
But on that end of the building, really, there's, it's all landscaped until you get to, in essence, the curb after the canopy.
Let me look at that real quick.
So not only are we crossing the drive-through, but there's no pavement to get you to a sidewalk area. Could you add a sidewalk?
Can I come up and, can you show me where you're talking from?
So here's your sidewalk here, but there's no sidewalk in this area. It's just a straight pavement.
Because this is, there's a bunch of existing concrete right here. So this, when you come across, there's actually a little clear, some landscaping, which is-
The note says it's all landscaped. And you've got the sidewalk here. You just need to tie into that somewhere. I like your sidewalk better.
So you're gonna come across here, come to that sidewalk there.
Yeah, let's see if that coming across, you're gonna have to do that diagonally or come across.
Yeah, we can get some more.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, sure.
Should we approve this? What is the construction duration? Will you remain open?
No, they will shut it down for approximately two, two to three months, roughly. They are opening up the whole back of the building, so it's kind of hard to keep that open. And then they pretty much are demolishing the entire site. They plan on doing this this fall if it's approved. So about two to three months it would be shut down. Apologize for that.
Mr. Sheriff, if I could just ask one question. So, you know, there's a lot of concern about pedestrian safety, both crossing the drive-through and crossing the access drive and getting them safely to a, to a door. And I know this is a problem almost at all Chick-fil-A's right now. But, so in terms of like a speed pillow or something, I think in the, both in the, in the drive lane, drive-through lane, and I also think on that access drive. And then in addition to that, would you be willing to sign that with one of those flashing signs? Because I really, I mean, as somebody who's gone across those, I think, I think that really is an issue, and now you're gonna do it twice.
On the adjacent property, we would have to get the, obviously, the property owner's approval of doing that. I don't know if that'd be possible or not. Chick-fil-A, I've never seen them have a flashing sign on their property like that.
Right. Well, it's a first for every company.
We can certainly ask a question.
So I think that really is an issue. We'll talk about that.
There is one in Dallas, Texas, that has a flashing sign that's set up just like this.
Okay. Haven't been to that one, so.
It's off I-30 north of Dallas.
Okay.
This is an pertinent question, but what are the discs under the overhangs? Are these mirrors or?
The discs under the overhangs?
Fans?
Oh, yes, those are fans.
Interesting, okay. I could not figure it out.
They actually have heaters under there as well.
Gotcha. Any other questions from the commission for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, if anyone from the audience would like to approach the podium. Seeing nobody, we'll close public comments and open up commission discussion. Mr. Elif, we'll start with you tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I get to go first.
Every time.
It's a huge improvement separating the, those drive aisles from the parking. I think that's tremendous, and I would support that. I do really like the idea of the raised area going through that, that drive-through. And, yeah, most, a lot of fast-food places, this would make me really nervous, but it's a fact that they can run it there and run it efficiently. And so I would support this. Thank you.
Ms. McBride?
Yeah, and, and I agree with what Mr. Ella has said, but I do think that they need to lose a parking space and make an opportunity for folks to turn around. I think the thought of people backing out there is just not a good idea. And I do think, I feel pretty strongly about the inclusion of information and warning and so forth for the pedestrian access, not only across their drive-through, but also across that access drive. Because now we're gonna be down to 23 parking spaces on site. So, and I'm assuming that their, their employees are all gonna park off-site. So for their staff and for customers, I really think that's, that's important.
Mr. Lewis?
I, I agree with what's been said by the other commissioners. Also, I commend, I think Chick-fil-A's been good since we've had them in the community, and they've worked well with sports organizations and whatnot. Having to be closed for two to three months is going to be tough for some people, but- is going to be tough for some people, but I understand. So.
Mr. Gothard?
I also agree with the other commission members. You know, I do like the idea of, you know, I think someone called a pillow at the crosswalk. You know, it's, I think it's effective at the Anderson Town Center at those crosswalks, and if we could incorporate that in this line, I think it'd be safe or for all the occupants that are becoming annoying. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think we can all agree that improvements certainly are needed at this location, and these are them. Customers are already using that shared parking and walking across the thing. It's kind of frustrating that, you know, the owners of the shopping center aren't here to be able to speak to that or maybe walk through that with us, because I understand you can't, you know, represent their property for them. But I do agree with, you know, whether it's pavers or a pillow, that something onsite is definitely makes sense. And the only other comment I had here was a note for Paul that maybe we want to get some of these updated parking numbers from the industry and see if they're, you know, if it makes any kind of sense to look at our code to make adjustments.
And the quantity of the ADA overall?
No, there was a comment in the application that mentioned that there's been a lot, there's been a shift to drive-through versus parking. So, that might be interesting to look at if available. Any other comments from the commission or discussion points? Seeing none, we can close discussion, and if there's a motion that can be entertained.
I think I've got stuff written down. I would make a motion that we approve the major modification final development plan, case one-dash-nineteen eighty-seven, what seems like yesterday, for eighty-five ninety-eight Beauchamp Avenue, subject to the recommendations in our staff report, items one through nine, and then with the following additional conditions. Number ten, that a turnaround space be provided on the south side of the then will be twenty-three car parking lot. Number eleven, that a speed pillow be provided in the drive-through lane and the access drive of the shopping center to the north of the building. That both of those pedestrian crossings contain signage with flashing lights, and that a sidewalk be constructed to connect where the crosswalk at the drive-through connects to the sidewalk adjacent to the building. Item number twelve, that the property owner's authorization to borrow square footage from elsewhere on the center be provided to the township. Is it on this?
I think number was, I had thirteen. Just three?
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Okay. I had a speed pillow on the side. That's twelve, and the property was thirteen.
Oh, I combined a sidewalk and it was all pedestrian.
Gotcha.
Clarification, is this speed pillow on the north end, none at the other two pedestrian accesses across the?
I mean, what does the commission think? I mean, I think the one that's mostly been used is the one that-
Yeah, I just know from personal experience. I haven't used the other. It's always been familiar.
Yeah, and, you know, now that the bulk of the parking is here, and you have to cross the two at the curve.
Then you'd be two lanes.
Two lane, you know, that one I would think would be good to be safe.
Okay, I would amend my motion then to include both of the, or all of, I should say, all of the pedestrian access points be so signed and constructed with-
Well, I go back to the point of clarification I had that I don't know that we can make requirements off-site into, I mean, I know this is a final development plan review, but we don't have representation.
Well, I think we can make it, and if they can't make the improvements that we're making as a condition, they have the opportunity to come back to us. Do they not?
So, the only difference here, this is all case one nineteen eighty-seven, so I think it is appropriate. It is multiple parcels, but the original final development plan was for the entire shopping center, including Chick-fil-A. So, I think it's appropriate.
Do they have not, I mean, do they have power of attorney type of representation to do that?
Chick-fil-A?
Yes.
Well, I mean, again, the owner of the property gave Chick-fil-A authority to apply for this.
Sure. Okay. Do we have a second?
I would, I would second.
Ms. Donovan, would you like to call? Roll.
Mr. Ella?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we are gonna take a quick break. If you're aware, we have video recording of the evening's meeting. We need to make sure we have enough memory to do that.